Hold this meeting to order, and we stand for the invocation, please. Creator of everything good, we pray for your intercession and bring peace, comfort, and harmony to the world. Embolden and empower the leaders to do the right thing for the right reasons, and we pray for the safety and health of everyone in our great nation. And now I ask for a moment of silence for all of those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice for our safety. Okay, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this point, I ask for the certification of the closed session.
Motion, please.
Second. Okay, open the vote.
Give us just a second, please. Vote is open.
All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor Wilson, may I have your vote, please? Thank you, by a vote of ten to zero, you've certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay, now it's time for our time where we honor those who deserve honor. And I'm going to ask folks from the American Heritage Month, Native American Heritage Month proclamation, Chief Emeritus Lee Lockamy and Nansman Indian Nation to come forward. And I ask my friend and colleague, Councilmember Jennifer Rouse, to be so kind as to read the proclamation. Welcome.
All right, welcome, y'all. The proclamation reads, whereas the indigenous peoples of Virginia have provided stewardship of her lands and waterways for many millennia, and whereas 16th-century English maps documented the villages of Chesapeake and Apisus in the area that is now Virginia Beach, and whereas the Chesapeake Indian tribe resided in village settlements in present-day Virginia Beach when those maps were drawn, and whereas the Chesapeake abandoned or were removed from this area around the time of the earliest 17th-century arrival of permanent English colonists in the region, and whereas members of the Nansman Indian Nation were displaced by the English from their ancestral lands around the Nansman River, with some settling in areas formerly occupied by the Chesapeake, and whereas some members of the Nansman Indian Nation trace their ancestry to the 1638 marriage of Elizabeth, daughter of a Nansman chief, to John Bass, an English minister, and whereas there is documentation that a Nansman Indian reservation existed in the 17th century in southern areas of what is today Virginia Beach, and whereas the government of the United States of America officially recognized the Nansman Indian Nation in January 2018, and whereas members of the Nansman Indian Nation continue to be vital members of the community in Virginia Beach today, and whereas Chief Emeritus Lee Lockamy of the Nansman Indian Nation is a resident of the city of Virginia Beach, and whereas November was first declared as Native American Heritage Month in the United States of America in 1990, and whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia has commemorated November as Native American Heritage Month since 1996, and whereas Native American Heritage Month is an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the American Indians who call Virginia Beach home, whose abilities and contributions strengthen our economy, enrich Virginia Beach's diverse culture, and invigorate the city's communities. Now therefore I, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, do hereby proclaim November 2023 Native American Heritage Month. In Virginia Beach, I call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Virginia Beach to recognize the contributions of Native Americans to the history and development of the city, state, and nation, and to commemorate this month with appropriate activities. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, to be affixed this 21st day of November 2023. Bobby Dyer, Mayor.
It's always an honor to work with y'all. The Nansman Tribe is going to be really prevalent coming up in the next couple of years. We're going to move a lot of our base from Suffolk to Virginia Beach, open up hopefully a new tribal center, and we'll keep on going.
Again, on behalf of the Nansman Nation, my name is Keith Anderson and the current Principal Chief of the Tribe, and as Lee said, we look forward to continuing to build a phenomenal, dynamic relationship with the City of Virginia Beach moving forward. And thank you so much for your efforts in supporting the Tribe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, I will read the city's speaker policy. I want to remind everyone that our city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of the group, will have up to three minutes to speak on any single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have signed up to discuss. And finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussions and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the city council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Madam Clerk, are there any one-item speakers?
Yes, we have two items that have only one single speaker, ordinance number four and ordinance number seven. Ordinance number four is via Webex, Heather Godbliski. You are unmuted and may begin. She is not on Webex. So for ordinance number seven, Vic Nichols.
Welcome. This is going to be very short. This is pretty much ridiculous that this program was not overwatched enough to know that these types of things that were going on, we should have known about this a long time ago. To have the taxpayers really are the ones that are going to end up having to pay millions of dollars for this, that's a problem. Where's the oversight? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers for that item.
That's it?
For the consent agenda, yes.
Okay, consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under ordinances, number one. Number two is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a license, execute a license agreement with Starbucks corporations for the use of 50 square feet of city-owned property, Ray, the outdoor seating area at 31 Ocean, 241 Laskin Road. Number three is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease for city-owned land for up to five years at 1401 Southern Boulevard regarding Earth-in-Motion LLC with Mr. Taylor abstaining. Number four is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $18,953,059 to the FY 2023-24 Capital Improvement Program and $1,142,237 to the 2023-24 Parks and Recreation Operation Budget from the sale of easements, Ray, an electronic transmission corridor for the coastal offshore wind project to Dominion Energy, Virginia, with Ms. Henley voting no and Wilson abstaining. Number five is the ordinance to appropriate $26,148,809 from the FY 2022-23 School Reversion Funds to the Virginia Beach Public Schools FY 2023-24 Operating Budget and Capital Improvements Program. Number six is the ordinance to appropriate $23,445,223 from the Commonwealth of Virginia to the Virginia Beach Public Schools FY 2023-24 Operating Budget regarding additional 2% compensation increase for all full-time equivalent employees and an all-in approach focusing on high-intensity tutoring, the Virginia Literacy Act, and the chronic absenteeism. Number seven is the ordinance to appropriate fund balance of the Tourism Investment Program, the TIP Fund, and to authorize the city manager to execute the settlement transition and termination agreement for the Virginia Beach Sports Center with Council Lady Wooton voting no. Number nine is the ordinance to amend City Council Section 21-502, Ray, penalty for violation of weight limits for certain vehicles. Number 10 is the ordinance to authorize the temporary encroachments into a portion of city-owned property known as Lake Bradford, also known as 2213 Pleasure House Road, Ray, maintaining an existing shed and porch, and to construct and maintain a wood dock, a wood pier, an easy dock, and kayak launch in timber piles and a 20-foot and a 5-foot city-owned public drainage easement located at the rear of 14 Bradford Point, that's in District 9. Number 11 is the ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into city-owned property known as Croatan Beach, Ray, construct and maintain a beach access walkway and observation deck at the rear of 500 South Atlantic Avenue, and that's in District 5. Number 12 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $1,122,737.36 in additional $22,227.37 from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, to the FY 2023-24 Fire Department Operating Budget for expenses related to the mobilization of Virginia Task Force II, Ray, the Tropical Cyclone Idalia in Florida. Number 13 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $158,477 from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, to the FY 2023-24 Fire Department Operating Budget, Ray, cars associated with equipment needed for the Virginia Task Force II team. Number 14 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $119,519.48 in additional $3,390.39 from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, to the FY 2023-24 Fire Department Operating Budget for expenses related to the mobilization of Virginia Task Force II, Ray, the Tropical Cyclone Lee in New Hampshire. Number 15 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $9,686 from the Commonwealth of Virginia to the FY 23-24 Voter Registration and Elections Operating Budget refund salary adjustments approved by the General Assembly. And number 16 is the ordinance to transfer $73,734 from the Tourism Investment Program, TIP Fund, to the FY 2023-24 Emergency Medical Services Operating Budget, Ray, contract for beach lifeguard services. A move for approval.
Do we have a second? Okay, any other discussion? Let's open the vote.
The vote is open. By a vote of 10 to zero, approve the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson, noting the abstentions and the no votes.
Okay, first order of business under ordinances is the ordinance to authorize the vacation of a 20-foot public access easement along the eastern boundary of 2454 Starfish Road, subject to dedication for an improved public access easement approximately 140 feet eastward of 2454 Starfish Road at the request of Westminster Canterbury on the Chesapeake Bay.
We have three speakers. The first speaker is Ben Uncle. The next speaker is Casey Kenner.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for the reminder about the three-minute rule. I appreciate it. Last time, when the clock stopped, the point I was going to make and didn't get a chance to say is to remind you that the revenue estimates from this project alone are that the project will contribute to the city treasury in excess of $1 million every year into the future, just from the Bay Tower alone, not counting the healthcare expansion that we had to put on hold because the interest rate environment has changed since you approved this conditional use permit way back in 2020 in September. Our project is $450 million. I would just note that that's bigger than the dome site project, and we've never asked for any city money. Instead, our ask is to move a public easement that was at the edge of the Casa del Playa condos like it's at the edge of every other property along that stretch of Shore Drive to relocate it a mere 59 steps to the east so that it runs along the edge of our property and not through our parking garage. Previously, I gave to the clerk exhibits to document the facts about which Mr. Wolf testified regarding the recent increase in trespasses that we've had that have caused us to spend an extra $40,000 for an automatically closing ceiling garage door over our parking garage near Shore Drive in April of this year so that after 9:30, we have a completely sealed garage and cars and people have to go past our gatehouse in order to get into our garage. Today, when we catch trespassers who get onto our property, we can ask them to leave. Today, we can seal off our garage. That's where the one entrance is in front of our security gatehouse rather than behind it. But with a public easement, our Bay Tower residents can't do that. We've not come with our hands out asking you for anything, but we have come, we've not also, we've also not come with empty hands. We've offered to pay for all of this. We're dedicating the land. We're building the easement. We're building the structure. We agreed to routinely maintain it, and at Council Schulman's suggestion, we recently agreed to deposit $100,000, $95,000 meaning the cost for the ramp and the stairs that Mr. Solomon was worried the city would have to replace, on deposit with the city. It's the first time I'm aware, I have to be careful, first time I'm aware, consulting with our experts, that a nonprofit has pledged that kind of money to backstop what we're dedicating that'll be a public easement improvement. The newer access that we're building is wider, safer, lighted, landscaped, and fully ADA compliant. The closest other ADA beach access is 1.9 miles away. Mothers with children.
Thank you very much. Most appreciated.
Oh, can I ask a question?
Good question.
Thank you for coming out, Mr. Uncle.
Thank you.
So has there been a document drawn up for the $100,000?
Pardon? Yes, we submitted documentation to the city manager. That is the cost of the ramp, $95,000 for the cost of the ramp and the steps. In full transparency, as I mentioned to Councilman Schulman, it does not cover the pilings, which are driven eight feet down, and he knows from his experience with the wetland borders that even the picture Mr. Solomon showed, the pilings remain.
Can you explain the concern of if this is not approved, of the public going through the middle of your parking garage?
Yeah, it's, you know, the two most vulnerable people in our population of citizens are the young and the older people who walk alone. They're very concerned. We've had an increase in trespasses on our campus. I submitted records today of 16 through this exhibit, and one got up all the way to the top of our parking garage, a drunk person, and had a crash. So it does happen, and people are concerned. Just as we wouldn't put an easement through a schoolyard or a school building, why would we put an easement in terms of public policy through a retirement community where the average age is 83?
And how many residents do you have, and how many are you expecting when the new tower is built?
We have 685 now. We will have over 300. Currently, there are 163 depositors and their families anxiously waiting this outcome. The city needs this project. All the studies said we need it, but when we put a price on it and made it available, we sold it five months sooner. We got to 70% pre-sales to go to the bond market, and there's a narrow window we're trying to seize before the holidays. We got to 70% pre-sales five months earlier than any outside expert predicted we would. The city is crying for this project.
And from all the studies I've seen, there is a shortage of senior housing, correct?
Yes, there was a study done by Plant Moran that was published in 2019 that said Virginia Beach was the third most underserved senior housing metro area in the entire country. McAllen, Texas and Augusta, Georgia were listed with Virginia Beach. So we have a real problem with our Silver Tsunami coming to the city, and we're trying to help out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Josh.
Mr. Uncle, thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you also for being amenable on the contribution that you're proposing to the beach accessway. In fairness, I would like to mention that this, that the discussions that we had resulted from a collaboration and conversation that I had with District 8 Councilmember, Councilmember Taylor, and, you know, up to tonight, wasn't sure, this is a nine-vote threshold, obviously. Was not sure if we had nine votes, and I'm still not, but in the event we did have nine votes for this, I thought, you know, since the proposal involved building a beach accessway that is to a higher standard than what we ordinarily would build, that it would be appropriate to ask for a contribution in the event of storm damage. So I just wanted to clarify that this was a collaborative request from...
I thank both councilpeople. The city staff has told us they want to be in control of the rebuild. So you have enough money to rebuild it once. After that, the city can decide whether it wants to run along the seawall. We can't be responsible in perpetuity for the new design that we can't control, but we've done our level best. The taxes in one year, two months of them, would pay for a new ramp. Two months of them. Every two months, you could have a new ramp. If the city treasury is what we're really worried about, the citizens and the treasury win.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, and then Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Uncle. I appreciate your remarks. One aspect of the, of this issue, should the easement not be approved, that I'm concerned about, is the delay in construction. And the reason that I have that concern is because I think we all recognize that, you know, people's, our golden years are very precious, and I believe strongly that it's, it's everyone's right to live out those years in the manner in which they planned and see fit. So I wonder if you could talk a little bit about if the council doesn't approve this easement tonight, what impact could that have on the, on the life choices that seniors in our community have made for their golden years?
Well, at least a four-month delay and probably longer. The bond market window may close. It was locked for a year and a half before, and, but I'm more worried about the human impact. We're already three years late. The alternative people have is to stay in their homes. That leads to loneliness and isolation. The UK has its own Deputy Minister of Loneliness. That's how important it is. And people are going to suffer longer, and when they're at home, everybody assumes that everybody's wealthy and can buy home health aids. You can't get them scheduled. You can't make up the gaps. We're in a bad labor shortage, and so people's safety is at risk, their happiness is at risk, and we're delaying something they could enjoy when the average person who moves in lives another 10 years. So a year is a big part.
Thank you. Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Uncle and Mr. Mayor. I'd planned on having comments, but since you're here for questions, I think it's important to kind of clear up a few things. And I want it to be clear in my comments that when you came before council in 2020, you understood the threshold necessary for this easement, and you also understood at the time that there weren't nine votes due to the recusal of three members. Is that accurate?
Yes, I understood that we had too many conflicts and that we couldn't get nine votes to do the easement then.
Okay. And then in terms of the security, I'll speak from experience. I'm not sure how many of my colleagues have cared for elderly people, but I had the opportunity to take care of my great-grandmother, and I know you stated you all don't turn anyone away, but we have an affordable housing crisis, we have a workforce housing crisis, and now you're saying we also have a senior housing crisis. And at the time that I cared for her until she passed at 105, I just don't want there to be any misconceptions of, does he care about old elderly people? We couldn't afford to put her in a home to share a room at $7,500 a month. So the reality is, if there was a delay, there are still going to be thousands of elderly individuals in this city that, due to their finances, couldn't afford to live at Westminster, nor King's Grant House, nor, as I was fortunate, to have to purchase a single-family home, go get a caretaker, and a roommate.
That's right. We do the best we can. We lose money on 30% of our apartments, stone-cold lose money through private subsidies. If we had more government subsidies, we could take care of more people. But the fact that we can't take care of everybody doesn't mean that we shouldn't take care of those we can.
Fair. And then I spent a lot of time engaging the community because District 8 is comprised of 44,000 people, including the roughly 700 that reside at Westminster. In the planning document, in the planning document from 2011, March 11, 2020, and throughout many of the other documents, staff was very specific in their language, and I'm going to read it for the public. It says, "The applicant is encouraged to contact and work with the Crime Prevention Office within the Police Department for crime prevention techniques and crime prevention through environmental design concepts and strategies as they pertain to this site." Have you all, has that been an active process?
I don't know which people we've consulted with, but we have the cards of six police officers, and we did look at our security situation, put a garage door... officers, and we did look at our security situation, put a garage door to seal automatically at 9:30 every night, the entrance to our garage that's closest to Shore Drive.
Okay. Because I ran into Captain O'Brien today, and I think it's going to be important, whatever, whichever way this vote goes.
I would love to cooperate on safety.
Because this was mentioned three times in the planning documents. And there is a security and peace, peace of mind concern for all of the residents. I know Mr. Borst had the image of the...
Yes, no other property, no other association near us has an easement, beach access easement running through the middle of their lot. And we just want to move it to the edge to have the same thing our neighbors have.
And in our conversation the other evening, you were clear that $100,000 would cover if there was a major storm damage, maybe one time.
And I pointed out in my letter that, that excluded the pilings, which would be expected to survive. Yes, that'd be a one-time storm, completely wiping it out. We don't anticipate, because of the way we're building it, we think it's going to last at least 20 years. But to remove the one objection we heard, other than the distance walking by the one association who was on Shore Drive, look at the associations who are not here. But to remove that objection, we made that pledge.
Okay. And I had the unfortunate privilege to represent District Eight earlier this year when we had a tornado come that we weren't expecting, and it just ravaged the district. And so I don't like to bet against God or Mother Nature, anything could happen. And that's why I worked collaboratively with Councilman Schulman, that if there weren't nine votes to ensure that there was some kind of money. But we do have to explain to the public that if this was to occur more than once, it is our responsibility to repair that walkway.
That's right. And two months of the extra taxes would pay for that.
Okay. There's just a, because you mentioned the one association, and I think it's very important as...
Last week, one came and spoke, the one that came to speak.
In those, in the notes that I reviewed, and I'll just again read for the public, because I have an obligation to represent all of the constituents of District Eight. "The applicant also met with residents of the Starfish Shores condominiums and Bayview Villa condominiums on November 9, 2019, residents of Ocean Shore condominiums on December 17, 2019, and the Lynn Haven Colony Civic League on February 8, 2020. To date, staff has received one letter in support and eight letters in oppositions. Opposition concerns raised, including include building height," which this is not about that tonight, "and beach access easement." And so that was in our report. And there are six new members here tonight that didn't vote in that September 2020 vote, which was five to two with those three recusals and one absent. As we showed up today at the workshop table, we, we had a document that was at our, at our seats. And it was a survey that was done in March of 2020. And number five, the fifth question was, "What are your biggest concerns for this project?" And the public, 268, the second highest percentage, was the loss of the current public beach access. And so one of the issues or concerns I brought up to my colleagues were the other, the additional five beach accesses that don't have the ADA and the desire amongst some in Shore Drive that that would, that we would take care of that. And so ultimately, the good news is the towers are still going to be built.
I'm sorry.
The tower will be built, whichever way we go tonight. The $1 million that you had mentioned will continue to be added to the tax roll when the tower is complete. Is that accurate?
Yeah, people will move into a tower with a easement through the middle of it, of their parking garage.
Okay. And then, in speaking to Captain O'Brien and having confidence in our public safety, we do have that mentioned here three times, that you are encouraged to continue to contact and work with the Crime Prevention Office within the Police Department for crime prevention techniques and crime prevention through environmental design concepts and strategies as they pertain to this site.
The gentleman who would do that is right here. Yes.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Anyone else?
Sorry. I have one other question, because I was just looking at this, at the map, and I don't know if the, if the viewing public would have, is able to see that. But I just want to take a moment, Mr. Uncle, if you could address the spacing of the easements along the road. Because it appears to me that adjusting the easement, as you proposed, will actually bring the easement closer to where the public would actually have better parking options and more convenient access to the, to access the beach.
That's exactly right, Councilman, because all the parking takes place along Shore Avenue, Ocean Shore Avenue, and moving the 40, 59 steps, excuse me, from here to here is actually closer for all those people with a nice ramp and places to meet with a beach buggy and a ramp down to the sand. And this document also would indicate that this condo association is gated, this one is gated, and the two to our left are gated. We just want the safety that they enjoy and feel is necessary.
I apologize for interrupting. Mr. Uncle, if you could talk into the microphones so the public can hear you as well at home.
Oh, yes.
And just as a follow-up, Mr. Uncle, it doesn't, and I'm somewhat familiar with the, with the layout of the site. There really aren't, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of parking options that would be, public parking options, that would be near the proposed easement if it went through the center of your tower?
No, there aren't. Just along Ocean Shore, that's it. So the majority of people parking to go to the beach have fewer steps. And I apologize for missing the microphone.
Okay, Barbara?
In addressing a, a little bit about what Mr. Taylor was recalling for us about the application when it was approved in, what was it, 2020? The, the big question was whether or not that height of the tower was going to be allowed. And I think that was the thing that caused the most opposition, was the height of the tower. And, but it was approved, and that's approved. But also, a very complicating issue was this access. And I just remember, we spent an awful lot of time talking about this particular access on Starfish Road. And unfortunately, in my mind, I was very much confused about where that access was and what the, what the impact was going to be. And as I recall, that was why we added that condition, that we weren't going to be settling that access point with that vote, that this would be settled in the future. And so I think that's why we separated it and made it a different issue, so that it could be considered as a separate issue, which is what we have before us tonight. So before us tonight is not the question of whether or not this tower is going to be built and whether it's going to have the height. That's decided. The question is whether the access is going to stay where it is now, or whether it's going to be moved 140 feet to the east. And so that's, that's all that's before us tonight. But if you leave it where it is now, then it will go through your garage. If we allow it to be moved, it's going to be moved 140 feet to the east. And that's all that's before us at this point. And in looking at this, this is what, I'm glad we separated it, because I understand now the difference. Because it seemed to me that we were, from what was being brought to the council at that time, it seemed that it was going to be a great distance apart. But actually going out there and seeing how close it is, it's so close. I mean, it's not as much as my front yard. And it's a very short distance that it's being moved. And to me, it's going to be much more obvious that it's a public right-of-way if it's moved to that location than if it stays in the garage. If it stays in the garage, it's going to have the appearance of being a part of Westminster Canterbury that is not open to the public, I think. But if we move it here, which is 140 feet, it's going to be very obvious that it's going to be a public access, and it's going to be built to a much safer standard. That's kind of the way I'm thinking about it. I think you've got to make a comment.
That's right. The easement separation issue, silly us, we never thought there'd be any public policy dispute about an easement through the garage. We didn't have the votes then to take care of that question. Now we're in that position, and yes, we could build a hardened tunnel over it at extra expense and delay. But for what point? For what purpose? Who is served by that? The safety of our residents could be jeopardized, and no one's interest is served. Even the Parkers have fewer places to go to enjoy a much nicer easement. We, you're right, there just weren't the votes. And I don't doubt Councilman Taylor that there was energy around that easement in those comments. And you know why? My speculation? Because they thought it would kill the project. And they're not here anymore because the project is going through. It's not about the easement, it was about the project back then, and that's why people had comments about the easement.
Well, I will just say, as my own position in hearing all of those discussions at that time was that I had the impression that it was a much greater distance and a much greater impact. But now seeing them as a separated issue and being able to look at this as a separate issue, it's a, this is a much better location, and it's much safer because it's going to be ADA compliant, plus it's also...
Lighted, wider, flat. Lighted, wider, flat.
It doesn't have steps like all the rest of them to get up there. And it's going to be much more obviously a public accessway. That's the way I'm looking at it. And I, just as the difference between how confused I was in 2020, that's why in 2020, I was just really confused about it, and I didn't want to make the decision at that time. And so, I mean, it wasn't just a matter of not having the, the, the support necessarily for it because of the majority, the vote that was required. But I think there was just a lot of confusion about it among, among this council member anyway.
It's the narrowest portion of the Fish House Restaurant parking lot. That was a very skinny lot. That's the distance we're talking about.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Amelia?
Yes, I want to mention, I got a chance to get, to go out there, ride around, look at the distance, again, which is short. I liked the way you have it, it's wider. You're going to do the ADA compliance. You had lighting, which is so important, as you know, safety for our elders is very important. And not only you had it wider, but you had little kind of spaces that people who needed to pass each other...
Pass each other.
Was built into that. So I thought that was very thoughtful.
And we designed the ramp and the whole easement with the benefit of your city staff, but we designed the ramp pointing north because that's what our next-door neighbors wanted. They've helped us pick the materials for the wall, and they didn't oppose the easement in front of the wetlands board and all of that. So we've done neighborhood outreach where we could, and we've satisfied rational, we've satisfied the people we could satisfy.
Yeah, you could even have a little dog walk along with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris?
I believe, Councilman Schulman, just for clarity, is, has Westminster Canterbury at any time or during any season, are there, are your garages open to the public? Do you rent out or charge for parking?
We charged for the Fish House lot for some beach parking when we had a vacant lot, not earning any money. But I don't know that we've ever charged for parking on our campus, certainly not our residents and our families. We do have valet parking for events sometimes, and there may tip the valet. I don't know if we've ever imposed a charge.
So let me try to be a little clearer.
Yes.
Is, has, is there any time during the year where Westminster Canterbury opens up their private parking garages to the public at a charge to park there?
Do you know the answer?
Yes. So the Fish House parking lot during the summer, summer months is for public to pay to park? Yes, yes, sir.
But not the private parking garages?
Not the private parking garage. Yeah, it's just the Fish House parking lot near the new beach access.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Nervous with any and all questions. I want to be careful.
Yep. Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And sorry to chime in again, but I did want to address another concern that was raised at the Bayfront Advisory Commission hearing that, and I want to commend your, your staff and your associates from Amanda and Lawrence, I believe was his name, from JLL and Kimley Horn, who did a great job at the Bayfront Advisory Commission hearing, fielding some difficult questions. And one of them related to tree removal. And I've since had a conversation with members of your staff, just seeking some clarification. The beach accessway that we're being asked to vacate now, and I actually drove by this morning just to confirm, there are, there are some pines, but there were, I think, six small live oaks found in that, in that beach accessway or near the beach accessway. I've also confirmed that the city's never done any plantings in that area, so those may have sprouted up just, you know, during the course of nature. My understanding is, and I'll just ask that you confirm, that although there's six, six small trees will be removed, the plan is to plant 10 live oaks in the new beach accessway, and also to plant an additional seven live oaks on your, on your site plan. So, so I just, I wanted to make sure that the public knew that and that you had a chance to confirm that, that we're net positive in terms of tree canopy.
We are net positive, and I looked over every time for the people to confirm, because I want to be precise and honest about the answer to every question, and your memory is exactly right about what we're going to do with the trees.
Thank you for doing that, too.
Anyone else at this point? Okay, thanks a bunch. Next?
The next speaker is Casey Kenner. And after Mr. Kenner is Martha Thoreau. Thank you, Ms. Thoreau. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Hello, Martha Thoreau, for the record. And I'm here to speak on this subject because I went to the Bayfront Advisory Committee meeting the other day and was able to see the presentation and hear the presentation of Westminster Canterbury's people. And the thing that caught my attention was the ADA compliance on the ramp. There was a lot of discussion on the ramp, there were pictures on the ramp. One of the members of the Bayfront Advisory Committee, who is an architect, had serious questions about the ramp. Many of you, most of you, all of you know that I have a son with a disability, and disability issues matter to me. I'm a little bit familiar with ADA. And so when everybody is throwing out the fully ADA compliant conversation, I question that because looking at the ramp that's being built, or the walkway, the switchback walkway, wooden walkway, it may or may not be fully ADA compliant. I would, before I would vote to go with this on public property, I would certainly look at it from that standpoint. The switchback dumps into the sand on a stairway. You have to go down a stairway. The access to it may be wider, but you still, you could only get a, get a wheelchair to the end of the boardwalk. You couldn't get it in the sand, unlike we have at the oceanfront where we live the life and have ramps. We've got a lot of ramps. In Virginia Beach, we believe the sand and surf are meant to be experienced and enjoyed by all. Throughout the coastal city, you'll find beach ramp accessibility. It goes on to say, "And while most of our beach entrances have ramp access, extended wood walkways allow you to get closer to the beach." I own a property at Fortieth Street, so I know what a ramp is. It's a concrete ramp, and there's a boardwalk to the beach. And people can get down there in their wheelchairs and with their disabilities. Now, what we're talking about here is unlike what Westminster Canterbury offers its citizens there, they have a concrete ramp, and they can get to the beach. The ramp that they're talking about building, the boardwalk switchback walkway, dumps down steps into the sand. A person cannot get on the beach from a wheelchair onto the sand. And if you're going to call it fully ADA accessible and keep advertising as it's fully ADA accessible, I would strongly suggest you run it by not only your city attorney, but maybe somebody at the national level, since ADA is a national law, you know, has the laws included in it. So that's what I would ask you to do. I think it's great that you want to make things accessible.
Thank you.
So do it for everybody, those in wheelchairs included.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Taylor? Okay, Mr. Taylor.
After much thought and consideration, without any lobbying to my colleagues and collaboration with Councilman Schulman, unfortunately, tonight, I will not be able to support this measure. I do not have a motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
On the condition that the agreement be entered into, if we can add that as a condition to the motion, that the agreement with respect to the $100,000 contribution be entered into and executed by us?
Would a -- I had drafted a potential condition that says WCCB will fund a reserve to be held by the city in the amount of $100,000 to be used for the cost of future storm-related repairs of the beach access within the new easement. If that language is sufficient, I have copies of that. I could pass it around.
That is fine by me for the purposes of making this motion.
Okay, do we have a second on this?
No.
No, a second. Any other discussion? Okay, let's open the vote. Motion to approve.
The vote is open. By a vote of nine to one, you've approved the ordinance as amended.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number eight, ordinance to add City Code Section 38-9 to prohibit weapons at the Housing Resource Center. Do we have any speakers?
We do. The first speaker is Philip Van Cleve. After Mr. Van Cleve is Catherine Loring.
Good evening, sir.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm Philip Van Cleve. I'm the president of the Virginia Citizens Defense League. If you might remember, in 2020, there was a massive gun rights rally, totally peaceful there in Richmond. That was our organization, 50,000 people for that. I just, I'm going to do a six-hour round trip today because I felt this was an important issue. When I first looked at this ordinance, I said, you know, why would city council want to punish poor people, take away their rights, the civil right to self-defense? It's certainly one of the most important rights we've got. If you can't protect your life, it's not worth much. And it could be for people that are down on their luck, somebody that might even have a concealed carry permit, who lost their job, lost their house temporarily, they're hurting. They come to the city, get temporary housing, which is a very nice thing that you've got going on, but they would have to give up their right to protect themselves. And indeed, I realize that there's some medical help there as well for people, but if you've got -- and I guess it's possible you could have people with mental issues, too, as well. A lot of the homeless sometimes have issues with mental health. But if any of them are dangerous, I certainly would, if I was staying there, I'd certainly want to be able to protect myself, and it's my right. In fact, in Virginia, the General Assembly recognized the right in public housing of all places not to take away somebody's basic civil rights. And there is a code section that deals with that, which is 55.11208, I believe it is. And it basically says, for public housing, there can be no condition that you give up your right to self-defense in order to stay there. And so, while I'm sure there was a good reason that this was put in, I think that in the end, it's something that I would hope you would not go with. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
The next speaker is Catherine Loring. After Ms. Loring is Pat Gudzinski.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. I am Kate Loring, and I've been a resident of Virginia Beach for over 27 years. The Housing Resource Center was established to help some of the most vulnerable citizens of Virginia Beach and provide them with safe housing. By adopting ordinance eight and keeping weapons out of their safe space, you can help protect them from potential violence. My 22-year-old daughter Claire was shot and killed in a domestic violence crime. I know the vulnerability of domestic violence victims, and I understand the fear and trauma of survivors who have witnessed or experienced violence. They need and they deserve to be free from fear when they seek services to help them recover from their situation. Because my best friend, who lives in Colorado, has an adult son who struggles with mental illness and drug abuse, and lost her brother to the same diseases through suicide, I well know the unpredictability and instability that are hallmarks of these illnesses and the importance of stable housing for them. These are anecdotes, personal stories, not facts. The facts show that our homeless population includes people who are unhoused because of lost jobs, crushing medical bills, natural disasters, aging out of foster care, and so on. But the facts of the most recent point in time count also show that it includes substantial numbers of people with long-term mental illness, as well as people with addiction diseases and domestic violence victims. It is not stereotyping or stigmatizing to recognize and face these issues, these facts, within the homeless population. Believe me, as Claire's mother, I am well aware of the negative stereotypes about domestic violence victims, and I try to correct them when I can. Likewise, to resist acknowledging that a significant percentage of homeless people have mental illness or addiction diseases is to continue to stigmatize that group. They are ill, just like the clients with diabetes or heart disease are ill. But diabetes or heart disease do not destabilize behavior in the same way. And as some groups constantly point out, mental illness is one key factor in weapons violence. When all the clients of HRC are in a period of stress and anxiety in their lives, why would we not choose to protect them from the additional trauma and potential for violence that the presence of weapons brings? They have a right to feel safe and be safe as they seek to get back on their feet, and knowing that the upset person next to you might be carrying a weapon is not reassuring. If Virginia's Extreme Risk Protection Act red flag law had been in effect in 2006 when Claire was killed, it might have saved her life. Likewise, adopting ordinance eight might help to save a life.
Thank you very much.
Or lives in the future, before something happens. Please approve this.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Pat Gudzinski, and then Vic Nichols.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Dyer and City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on ordinance I eight. My name is Pat Gudzinski, and I'm a homeowner, a taxpayer, a voter, and a 30-year resident of Virginia Beach. It is important that you understand that I am here to speak tonight because my family and I are real community members of Virginia Beach and will be affected by our local laws. I believe that you have received many communications of opposition to this ordinance from people across the state and maybe even across the country. I urge you to hear the voices of those of us who live right here in Virginia Beach. I volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America because we believe that all of us have the right to be safe from gun violence. I am here as a local volunteer for the Virginia Beach Norfolk Moms Demand Action Group to advocate for gun violence prevention actions within our community, including gun sense legislation. I am here to express our strong support of this ordinance to prohibit weapons at the Housing Resource Center. Moms Demand Action is not anti-gun. We are anti-gun violence. Many of our members are gun owners. We have them in our own home and do have much respect for the rules and laws that are part of gun ownership. It is our responsibility to keep our firearms secure and out of the reach of those who should not have them. Since 2020, Virginia Code 15.2-915 has authorized the governing body of a locality to adopt an ordinance which prohibits the possession, carrying, or transportation of any firearms, ammunition, or components or combination thereof in buildings owned or used by the locality. Let's join the 17 other localities in our Commonwealth who have adopted similar gun safety ordinances protecting more than 2.8 million Virginians. I ask you to make the best decision for the Housing Resource Center and take this reasonable and sensible step for our city to champion their staff in their challenging work to provide a safe and secure environment for their clients. This ordinance will show your respect for their staff and volunteers who deserve our gratitude and appreciation. We should not hesitate to bolster their efforts to keep their clients safe and free from fear of those who may mean harm. In order to maintain a safe environment, weapons must be prohibited at the HRC. Our failure to imagine possible harm to someone at this facility from an incident with any weapon should not put the clients and staff of the Housing Resource Center in danger. Tonight, you have the ability to take action to prevent one more tragedy in our city. I urge you to choose to act preventively and vote to pass this ordinance. I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving and that you have time with your loved ones. I choose to be here because I know too many families who don't have that good fortune. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Vic Nichols. After Ms. Nichols is Shay Coleman.
Welcome back.
You won't say that. Why do we go after poor people's guns? They're in a crisis, so our government wants to remove their means of safety. Well, let's make them out they all have mental health issues. I guess that makes it okay, then. Domestic violence folks by the HRC's website on the front page are to call Samaritan House. People shouldn't have to give up their constitutional rights because of others' irrational fear and control issues that need more mental health support than those who simply want to be safe in their persons. Why can criminals get full rights back after violating victims, but regular poor folks are robbed of chances to protect themselves? How many true gun-related issues have there been there? Why aren't concealed carry folks exempt from this? Statistically, we're safer than the cops. What data research shows that we're criminals who can't be trusted to carry there? Utah schools let CCW people in without a problem. Have the government keep people's guns? The city government should have been watching the money bleeding on ordinance seven, but you let the taxpayers lose millions. Why would we trust you to keep our guns safe? Chesapeake is dropping their concealed carry fees as they know they are illegal by state code. Virginia Beach is a bigger illegal violator, as this council and your attorney knows, but have done nothing. The city uses CC fees as a slush fund policing for profit. How about you guys obeying state law like you demand of us and maybe help these people get CCW licenses if they don't have them? Virginia Code 55.1-1208A6 prohibits banning of firearms in public housing units to staying there. 15.2-915E, same thing. So the government can't police itself, but objects to us having the means to protect ourself. That's a problem. You know why gangs have full auto switches and we don't? It's because criminals don't obey guns. They won't obey this either. Being poor and needing a hand up is not a crime, nor is it a reason to take advantage of people. New Mexico Governor Grisham banned Albuquerque legal gun carry, saying that no constitutional right is intended to be absolute. But when she was actually asked by reporters if she expected criminals to follow her edict, she said, uh, no. Again, why are we putting in something criminals aren't going to obey anyway? What makes you think that making this a gun-free zone is going to protect anyone? Didn't y'all learn your lesson in 2019 with Building Two? How about we remember them honestly and allow people to protect themselves?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Marge House.
What? Oh, I'm sorry.
Did this count at my three minutes?
No.
Take your time, please.
And after Ms. House will be Shay Coleman. Sorry. Messed that up.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. I made it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Marge House, and I have been a resident of Virginia Beach for 45 years. I am older than that. I'm here as a private citizen, but I'm here as a private citizen who has background working with homeless families in this area for 20 years, from 2001 and 2021. I was a shelter director for a program that served homeless families. I also was director of services. This is not a time to look at, we are taking away people's privileges. I truly believe we are helping people stay safe. Folks who come into the shelter are under extreme crisis, extreme stress. They are living from moment to moment. A lot of times, yes, there is mental illness. Yes, there is substance abuse and a lot of the things that go along with that. Not as a stereotype, but as a person who's worked with people, there sometimes can be a difficulty controlling emotions, controlling actions. And it's difficult for both families and staff to understand each other and to be able to listen and sit quietly and be peaceful. Not always a chance. Many of the folks that come into the shelter are deeply depressed and at great danger of committing suicide. We do not want to see that happen in a shelter. We do not want to have folks re-traumatized. Many of the folks that come into the shelter, and I don't have the exact numbers, but I know a very high number of folks that come into a homeless shelter have been victims of trauma. Well, if you've been a victim of trauma, there's been violence, there's been weapons used. Those weapons are not helping you feel safe, but probably re-traumatizing you. So I'm here to say that we must protect those at risk. We must protect those who work with those at risk, and we must protect anyone coming into a shelter to volunteer and to be a part of that community, to help raise people up out of poverty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
The next speaker is Shay Coleman. After Ms. Coleman is Curtis Wiley.
Good evening.
Hi. I urge you to vote no on tonight's Agenda Item Eight. I am urging this as a victim of a violent shooting crime. My goddaughter, also a victim, was not so blessed to walk away with her life. Both of us would have been better protected by a legal gun owner being in our presence. First, the proposed ordinance violates Virginia Code 55.1-1208A6, which prohibits banning of firearms in public housing units as a condition of staying there. Second, the proposed ordinance also violates Virginia Code 15.2-915E. Since for those who establish residency at the Housing Resource Center, their private residence is not being used for governmental purposes. I hold here a copy of your signed oaths. You are not at liberty to break the law in your capacity as an elected city council member. Your elected position means you swore an oath to uphold the United States Constitution and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia. The people of Virginia Beach chose you, our elected servants, to faithfully and impartially discharge your duties, to which you also swore an oath under God. The definition of impartially means not partial, not favoring one more than another, treating all alike, unprejudiced, unbiased, equitable, fair, just. This means you are not to consider your own personal preferences or political stances when voting on matters in your city council member capacity. You are to follow the law and to protect the rights under the law of those you serve without bias. You have absolutely no legal or lawful authority under your oath to violate these state codes. Lawfully possessing a firearm is a right protected under both the United States Constitution and the Virginia Constitution. This proposed ordinance unlawfully violates the rights of those needing services from the Housing Resource Center and/or those visiting or working there. Being that those in need of services from HRC are experiencing extreme hardship, it's clear that this ordinance proposal seeks to take advantage when their rights are no less guaranteed than yours or mine. You cannot pass ordinances that deny the basic civil rights of people to protect themselves in order for them to have shelter or to receive other services. Therefore, this ordinance would be a blatant act of discrimination and a violation of equal rights under the law. equal rights under the law. If any of you vote yes on this proposed ordinance because you received gifts, campaign contributions, or promises in exchange for voting in favor of any such gun banning measures, it is bribery. And be aware that he or she shall be guilty of a Class IV felony and shall forfeit his office and be forever incapable of holding any office of honor, profit, or trust
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Therefore, I trust you will uphold your duty and your oath by voting no. Thank you.
The next speaker is Curtis Wiley. And after Mr. Wiley, we'll have one Webex speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Counsel. I just have a few bullet comments. We all feel safe and secure in here tonight. Correct. We have a police officer over here with a gun. We have a police officer over here, one in the lobby, three downstairs. We all feel safe, right? But these police officers are not going home with us tonight. All right? When we go home, we got to protect ourselves. We can call them, but it's
Sir, can you speak into the mic?
We can call them, but we don't know when they're going to show up. All right? Law-abiding citizens need to have the ability to defend themselves. Betting on criminals to obey this ordinance is a low percentage bet. If the plan is to assign more police officers to patrol this area, what will be the cost? Will this council approve this spending today? Or will you provide private security for these 95 people that will have no security if this ordinance is passed? Bad people will continue to be bad. Good people need to have the ability and the resources to stand up to them. Restricting citizens gives the criminal the advantage. If I enjoy the right to bear arms and protect my family, so should all citizens, including minorities and poor people. As we saw in Israel, bad people attacked soft targets. Unarmed people fall in the soft target category. The municipal center shooting was carried out by someone that knew no one had a gun. If 95 people are going to live in this area, there's less than 95 people in here, and look at all the security that's in this building. I ask you to vote no for this ordinance and let these people have the right to bear arms. Thank you.
The last speaker is by a Webex, Robert Dean. Is Mr. Dean on, Kevin? He is not on, so, Mayor, that is all the speaker.
Okay. At this point, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve.
Move to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, the vote is open.
By a vote of 6 to 4, this ordinance has passed.
Okay, we're going to move on to our planning item, and that is White Cliff Presbyterian Church for a modification of conditions to a conditional use permit. Ray religious uses at 1445 North Great Neck Road, 2307 Millwood Road, and parcel between 2307 and 2309 Millwood Road, District 8. And it was deferred from October 17.
The first speaker is applicant's representative, Eddie Bourdon.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, Honorable Members of City Council. I come before you this evening on behalf of the trustees, the leadership, and the membership of White Cliff Presbyterian Church on Great Neck Road to request that council either defer this application, as I wrote to you and requested last week, or that you refer or remand, refer, not defer, refer, the church's application back to your Planning Commission for a future public hearing based upon significant new information concerning the fact that the city of Virginia Beach does possess, does possess, a public stormwater drainage easement through the pond on the church's property. A pond through which substantial amounts of stormwater from the six lanes of Great Neck Road and properties on either side of Great Neck Road to the north and to the south of the church's property all drain. This was crucially important information, which regrettably the Planning Commission did not have when they considered the church's application for modification of its conditional use permit last summer. The other piece of crucially important information, new information, is the fact that the contract purchasers of this 3.9-acre parcel of excess property owned by the church advised the church 10 days ago that they desired to apply for and seek approval of a conditional rezoning on this entire parcel. They will propose that the parcel have split zoning with the rear portion roughly 60% or so being proffered O2 office district zoning, with the proffers requiring that the existing office building on the property be renovated and retained, along with the existing parking and the existing pond and its surroundings, all remaining as is unchanged. And the eastern portion of the property adjacent to Great Neck Road would be rezoned from unconditional R10 to conditional R10 with a proffered plan to build five homes backing up to Great Neck Road, with the access to those homes being shared with the existing access to the office building. The proposed conditional rezoning assures everyone, along with the easement that I mentioned, that the pond or lake on the property, which is in actuality a regional stormwater best management practice, will not be filled nor altered. In essence, this conditional rezoning application that the buyers of the property seek to submit, which the church is in full accord with, will reset this process, which I am supremely confident will not produce the level of discord the current situation has produced. White Cliff Church is very, very appreciative of the contract buyer's decision to forego pursuing subdivision approval for as many as 12 lots on its excess parcel of land as it is currently zoned R10. And the church fervently hopes that those who have come down tonight share that appreciation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have and respectfully request that you either defer the application or frankly, take what I believe you will find to be the better alternative and refer the church's application back to the Planning Commission for a future public hearing in concert with the coming conditional rezoning application. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions ready at this point? Chris.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Mr. Bourdon?
Thank you, Mr. Dyer.
If you could answer a simple question for me.
Hope I have a simple answer. I may not.
A vote of yes tonight with what you've described would get you to the same place, get this applicant, they're still going to need to purchase, would they still need to purchase the property? And would that allow for these five homes to be built pending a new planning application? So the specific question is, if there was support to build five homes, would a vote tonight allow your applicant to still get to that place?
Councilman Taylor, the vote tonight would allow a reset of the process. A vote tonight doesn't approve anything. A vote tonight takes off the table what the purchasers of the property have been pursuing under its current zoning. And it takes off the table the notion of filling the lake. The conditional rezoning application will have to go through the same process, and that could be denied. There's no certainty that that's going to be approved. You all are not voting to approve anything tonight. So it doesn't approve five houses. It simply permits the Planning Commission to consider that application and the church's application, which if that conditional rezoning were to be approved, the church's application is then moot. They don't, I think we withdraw the application. But because the rezoning takes care of the modification of conditions that we're having to do, to not allow that process would put everyone in a position of either, you know, the church is told, no, they can't sell their excess property, which means that involves the church having to protect its ability to sell its excess property. And I don't even know that the conditional rezoning application under that circumstance, you know, that that may be able to move forward. But if that is not approved, the church has to be in a position to protect its ability to sell and utilize its excess property for something other than what is a liability for the church. So the church is just trying to encompass, certainly with the Bichards having said, this is what we want to do. The church is, that's great, because the big problem has been concern about the pond being filled. And so this eliminates that. And if the conditional rezoning is approved, then the church's application goes away entirely. But if it's not, the church is not going to be able to sit by and allow its excess property to essentially be condemned to no use whatsoever, and they can't perform under their contract if they can't sell the property without having no use whatsoever.
So if this body was to approve the sale of the property tonight, you could move forward on behalf of your client with the planning suggestion?
No. If you approved what the application before you is, then we'd be done, but there would not be the same protection for what the folks who've been opposed to the application, again, not because of what the church is doing, okay, but what the buyer of the property is trying to do. And the buyer of the property is saying they're not going to do that. So it gives everybody absolute assurance that the lake won't, or the pond, won't be filled. There is some assurance by the fact that there is, in fact, a drainage easement through it, but that also can be strengthened through this process, the protection of that lake.
Because the builder has given assurances to several of my colleagues that he doesn't want to fill in the lake.
And I think that's what I suggested, is that they have come to us and said they don't, you know, they want to do what I've suggested. And so there's no reason to put the church in a position contrary to the city by denying their ability to sell the excess piece of property. And that's what having to vote on their application would give, put council in a, I think, not a very, I wouldn't want to be in that position. And so this is just an ability to solve the biggest part of the issue. Now, there's certainly going to be folks who probably don't want to see anything happen with the property, but that's not, I mean, that really is not realistic, and that the church has no choice. The church has financial needs. It's a liability for them to maintain this property, and the city's no longer using the office building. So it's a way to, you know, to reset the situation. When we did the original, and you were at the meeting that the church had, and there was a lot of conversation about, you know, they wanted to know and be assured what was going to happen with the property, and they didn't like the idea that, you know, the pond was going to be filled, and they were going to try to put 12 houses on it. And that, you know, that's what, and we had a contract already in place, and so we have to, the church has to perform as it's required to under contract. And when the contract was entered into, neither party, both represented by council, had any idea that they would have to go through this modification process. And I don't want to get all into the weeds on that. But that, and that's why it went that way. Having gone through this process, there's contractual obligations the church has to the buyers and the buyers have to the church. And so the church is just very pleased that the buyers, they couldn't make the buyers change, but the buyers changed their mind, and they are not trying to do what was the biggest source of the opposition. Again, there may be some people who still want the city to buy it, and the church offered it to the city, you know, before they went down this road. So I don't know what else I can say.
Okay. That clears it up. I just wanted some clarity for the public, and I want to, I spoke to you as well, and I just wanted to be clear that we've deferred, we've deferred, and my position as the district council member is no filling in the lake, no homes. And so I'm looking for some leadership amongst those that support this new suggestion, because ultimately, there needs to be a vote for the church to sell their property so that Mr. Bichard and his partners can build five homes, even if they don't fill in the lake.
That vote's better taken when there is a plan that is before the body that shows what's being proposed, and that's the conditional rezoning. Today, if the church, in addition to denying the church, puts the church in a position and the city in a position I don't think either party wants to be in, and at that point, the property can be sold to the Bichards with unconditional R10 on all of it, which means they could, you know, leave the lake untouched and possibly build seven, eight, nine houses on the property. Because that's a by right. It's by right, unconditional R10 today. So again, council's not being asked tonight to vote on anything other than to reset the process and to do otherwise, again, would just put, it would create a conundrum that I don't think anybody wants to be in.
Okay, Barbara, and then, work.
Dumb question.
No such thing.
Have you all subdivided the property? I mean, if you've got a contract, I guess you must have two parcels there.
Yes. There were actually three parcels for many years, and it's been resubdivided into two. And the 4.1 acres that the church will retain is where all of the church's infrastructure, the church, the parking, the access is all on. The other 3.9 acres has no church infrastructure, no buildings on it, other than the office building that was used by the infant STEM program for over 25 years. And so that's, and that's the part that is, has no religious use and has not had any religious use.
Well, so then, you have two parcels.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're going to keep one of them.
Right.
And you're going to sell the other one.
The one that doesn't have any church
The 3.88 acres.
I think it's 3.9 and 4.1. Maybe it's, it might be 3.8.
See, I'm looking at our application here, and it just seems to me that maybe our application is wrong, because we've been talking about the whole parcel, when we should only have been talking about half of, part of the parcel.
The 1966 use permit, and that's what it's called, a use permit, that the church received when they started, is on all, and at that point, there were three parcels, that's on all eight-plus acres of land. And so this request today, that's come to you through Planning Commission already, is to modify the use permit so that it only applies to the 4.1 acres where all of the church infrastructure, parking, building, et cetera, are located. This has, this application doesn't really have anything to do with the 3.9 acres, other than the fact that the original use permit was on all eight-plus acres, even though there are no conditions attached to the 3.9-acre piece that requires anything on that piece of property. And again, in my view, and for lots of reasons that I won't go into tonight, because it doesn't, I don't think it's going to matter at the end of the day. I don't believe that should ever have been required. And that, and the attorneys who drafted the contract, not I, but I would have done the same thing, made no provision for that, because no one had any thought that this excess property that's not been used for religious purpose would need a modification.
Well, anyway, I'm looking at this, okay, you've been saying 3.9. They've got 3.88, so I think
3.88.
It says, the applicant is seeking to sell an approximately 3.88-acre portion of the property that is not needed. And then it says, then the church will retain approximately 4.13 acres of land. But if you've already subdivided them, you've got two parcels. And so you're selling the 3.88-acre parcel, and you are keeping the 4.13-acre parcel.
Yes, ma'am.
So you are not changing the conditional use So you are not changing the conditional use permit on the 4.13 acre parcel.
Not, not any way.
You are just changing the conditional, you're removing the conditional use from the 3.88 acre parcel.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're only dealing with a 3.88 acre parcel.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I think this might have been a part of the confusion of the Open Space Committee, that they thought they were looking at the total portion. Well, we really shouldn't even be talking about the 4.13 acres. We are only talking about the 3.88 acre parcel.
Absolutely correct. Absolutely correct.
Okay, the light's finally dawning. I'm sorry, it's taken so long.
No, that's, no, that's 100% correct.
So what you have is a 3.88 acre parcel that has a conditional use permit for religious use, and you don't want the religious use, you just want the religious use take, you know, I don't think we have ever had an application that's taking away a conditional use. I mean, a, whatever that is, because you still have the underlying use of the R-10.
R-10, yes, ma'am.
So you don't just have a parcel that has a conditional use for religious, you have a parcel that is zoned R-10, but also has this restriction on it.
That, that's exactly right. And, and just to be very technical, the, the permit was back in the 60s, wasn't called a conditional use permit, it was just called a use permit for religious purposes. And there were no conditions attached, okay? Subsequently, there were modifications to that that changed the term, because the ordinance changed to call it a conditional use. And all of those had to do with the sanctuary, increasing the size of the sanctuary, and adding classroom space. All of that is on the 4 point, what is now 4.12 acres of land. And that, that's, that's the whole thing, is that our ordinance requires three acres for, for a church. I have done three applications over the last 20-plus years for churches that had more than three acres of land, and they needed to sell excess property for, for financial reasons, all three to build houses on. And all three went from having more than three acres to having less than three acres, which made them quote unquote "non-conforming" under our three acres are required for a church. But that's the only use in our entire ordinance that requires an amount of acres other than what the zoning district requires. And those were all approved on consent. And, and there was, there was reason for, for doing, for having to do the application, because technically it doesn't meet the three acres. But they, they'll have 4.1.
Okay, all right. So you are just talking about the 3.88 acre parcel.
Yes, ma'am.
And you don't want the conditional use on it anymore, you just want the underlying use, which you still have.
Right.
But don't you have that regardless?
Ms. Henley, that, you, you're, you're talking, you're preaching to converted, yes. I, I think, based on, based on the tennis and racket club that I represent a number of years ago, they had tennis courts that had, used to have the indoor facility, the bubble, as it was called. They took the bubble away, we got approval to build a new, nice indoor facility across the street. They used the courts without any cover over them for a number of years and decided, all the rest of the courts on the other side of the street, it's, it's a waste of, of a good asset. They zoned residential, went in and, you know, subdivided, sold the lots. And, and we had to go to the Bay Board, but that, that was it. There was no modification.
Okay, well, I, I think, I think maybe this does need to be reexamined from the start with what it actually is, is a 3.88 acre parcel that we're either going to leave, well, if, if it still has the religious use on it, but it's also R-10, I think Mark Stiles wants to say something.
Mark, please.
Mrs. Henley and counsel, Mr. Burdon is being very charitable and not specifically calling me out. But he and I met on this before all of this started, and it has been and is, my opinion, that because all eight acres were within the religious use of that original use permit, which has been modified twice, that for it to come out from that religious use and then be governed exclusively by the underlying zoning classification, this council had to take an action to allow that. So he is here, and this issue is before you, because in my legal opinion, that is what's required. But yes, and, and that is why I have previously said to you, the only issue before you is whether or not the conditional use permit for the church at 4.1 acres, which is Mr. Burdon points out, is larger than the three acres required by code, is still an appropriate use with four acres as opposed to eight. That's really the question that the application that Mr. Burdon is bringing forward asks. Now, at the Planning Commission, there was discussion about filling the lake and building 12 houses, and the Planning Commission was concerned about that, and based upon that, they took their vote. What Mr. Burdon is proposing today, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, and if I get it incorrectly, you, please feel free to, to, to do so, but what, what he's proposing now is to say, rather than it just be under the underlying zoning, rather than you just voting yes or no, to bring that 3.88 acres out from under the conditional use permit, and have it be just straight R-10, the contract buyer has proposed coming forward with the rezoning, which would put split conditional zoning on both halves, so that this council would have assurance when it approved it, that it, the lake wouldn't be filled, and that there would be at most five residential units on the front portion of the property. So then those two, those two, both of those things would go back to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission could reconsider with all of the information then before them, and make a new recommendation to you as to whether it believed the, the split O2, conditional O2, conditional R-10 zoning was appropriate. And you would not need to take a position then on this tonight. You would either, as Mr. Burdon said, defer it so that that could happen, or in fact, remand the whole issue back to the Planning Commission. And I hope I've helped rather than make it worse.
Everything that.
It's one of the most confusing things I think I've ever heard.
Everything that.
Church and state.
Everything that Mr. Stiles said is true. I would just add one, not, not in any way contrary. Every planning commissioner who spoke that they, and voted not to recommend approval of this application, said they were concerned about one issue, and that is the, the idea that that pond could be filled, because the DEQ and the court didn't have any jurisdiction, and the city wouldn't have any say-so over it. And unfortunately, yours truly, you know, assumed that it didn't have one, because how did this thing get so far? And the city staff didn't advise them, because I don't know that, they knew that there was a drainage easement through it. And I specifically stated in the rebuttal that if in fact there's a, the city has a drainage easement through it, there's nothing that can make the city vacate that drainage easement, you know? But, but there was no way we could give them certitude on that. And that, I am 100% certain is the sole reason that they voted the way they did. And so therefore, you know, this just helps clear the table, and let's do this, you know, in a way that will make a whole lot more sense than what's here today. I can tell you that.
Okay, Worth?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Burdon. And I, just last discussion pretty much clarified, clarified it with me as well, but I just don't want to lose the, the fact that tonight, the application does not include an O2 rezoning. And so it does need to go back to planning and back to us, because that's an important part of the 3.88 acres, is the O2 rezoning along with the R-10.
Right, this, you're absolutely correct. This is, this is doing nothing with regard to the R-10 zoning that is on the 3.82 and the 4.1, every, every square foot.
And just, and so the pond goes with that.
And the, and the pond is almost entirely on the 3.82 acres. There's a little teeny corner of it that, the bank is on the remaining church property. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Barbara.
One of the things that came up at the Open Space Committee, and I don't think you were there, but I think the Public Works people were talking about the ability of the city to oversee that, and it's that the weir would still not be on the property?
I, I believe the weir that is, is on the, the city owns the adjoining property directly to the west of the terminus of the church's property and where the pond is located.
Well, it would be something we would have to be sure of, and that is whether or not we would have the ability to oversee the, the, the stormwater and the weir and so forth. So I guess it does need to go back to the Planning Commission and be reexamined from start to finish.
Right, because this, they'll have to have a, a meeting with the Presuminal, with all the staff folks, and that'll all be, you know, that, that's again, an opportunity for a reset and have everything looked at fresh.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Eddie, at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Some folks want to come forward.
The next speaker is James Haney. And then Susie Rice. Sir, are you representing a group?
Yes, Wickliffe Presbyterian. Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Jim Haney. I have lived in Virginia Beach since 1972, have been a member of Wickliffe Presbyterian Church since 1979. To me, the position of the church is not near as complicated as everybody's trying to make it. Only thing we are here for is the fact that we own eight acres of property. The church facility is on 4.1 acres, and we have the need to sell the property that we have not used all these years for church purposes, in order to continue the viability of the church. We don't want to be another statistic of all the churches that have closed, and we think this will help us have some bigger nest egg to move along the church. And we think the only thing we are asking you to do is give us approval to sell 3.8 acres of property. Whatever happens after that is another issue. Only thing we're concerned about is being able to sell our property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Susie Rice, and then it would be Julia Cherry.
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Everybody's using how long they've lived here and how old they are. I won't do that to you, but I have them all beat. I would like to clarify one thing, though, from Mr. Begone, that is that, that 3.88 acres has been used by the church and continues to be used by it. They have a sign on that property, they, they are leasing the old building they had originally built as a sanctuary for profit, and they use the parking lot for overflow parking during large events. My real pleasure in being here tonight is to extend my deepest appreciation to the Great Neck Estates and the surrounding communities for their diligence, time, and energy, and dedication in supporting our No Wetlands project. I would also like to extend our verbal respect to our Virginia Beach Planning Commission, and to those former and current city council members who have taken personal time to visit, listen, and share their concerns regarding the Wickliffe site in question. I strongly agree with Mayor Dyer, as discussed in his recent article in the Virginian Pilot, that our city needs much more affordable housing for our working population. However, six or five to 12 homes planned by the builder on wetlands on the property herein designated, will be priced for sale well beyond the financial ability of the average Virginia Beach worker. Let us all place our priorities to preserve wetlands, employ flood mitigation, provide open space for the immediate neighborhoods, and possible future educational experiences for our community, as well as spend our energy and resources for the benefit of our city, Virginia Beach, and not that of a single developer on a relatively small wetland site with an increasingly congested traffic area. I thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
The next speaker is Julia Cherry. After Ms. Cherry, will be Amanda Albert.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, honorable counsel. I just want to bring up a few, a few points. In 1966, when the church went for their conditional use permit, it was for the entire eight acres. In fact, their church use was on the side of Millwood. That was where the church was. There is an outdoor sanctuary there that is still used by the community. This has been a place that neighborhood, neighbors have been able to use the land as a park, which was on the property for our use for many years. We've been, been able to enjoy walking across the bridge and being good neighbors with the church as they have with us. R-10 rights were given up in 1966, in my opinion. R-10 went away when the church got their permit for the entire eight acres. This is my position. It would be detrimental to our community to have this property turned into residential, to include a business, is what I've heard the plan is going to be. Not only does he want to build houses on the property, he wants a business on the property. That's not right. It doesn't work with the community. We have offered help to fix up the, the bridge to the property. The community has stepped up and offered to do that. We were told Friday by Mr. Haney that they would just remove the bridge, just take it away. And Great Neck Estates, Great Neck Manor deserves some open space, and the city should, should look at it as open space. Team Red Bridge, our no-build, BB Wetlands team, we are the ones who have done all the homework. Planning should have done that. They should have known this was a storm water management facility on the property. They should have known the easement was there. We shouldn't have had to do all the work to bring it to your attention. And I'm, I, I really want to thank all the council members and mayor who have come out to the property and walked it and have seen the beauty in it, seen what it means to the community. We want to be good neighbors to the church. And they've been great neighbors to us, and we would like it to continue to be that way. We'd like to see the A-frame be turned back into use for the people with disabilities. That's what it was used for for many, many years. It can be used for that again. The church does make income off that property. They've been running out the A-frame, I believe, for three years. The A-frame is a beautiful building, and if you've been out to the property, you've seen how beautiful the building is. It's been up, had great upkeep, the city has put a lot of money into keeping it nice. And there's no reason why it can't just remain like it is and be turned into open space. The deferments, this is our third deferment, and I just don't know why the builder is having all these opportunities. When he filled out the application, and it was a joint application, he included it as the whole eight acres in his application.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
The next speaker is Amanda Albert. After Ms. Albert is Martha Thoreau.
Welcome.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Amanda Albert, and I've been living in Virginia Beach and working in the stormwater sector since 2019. So needless to say, I've been following this vote closely. I'd also like to say I'm not. been following this vote closely. I'd also like to say I'm not paid to be here. I'm just a concerned resident. I'm also really glad to hear the church's updates, desire for referral. I'm confused as well, but I still think my comments will be helpful. From my understanding, we're here to discuss whether the Y-Cliff Presbyterian may remove its conditional use permit in order to sell land for development, and that those two things are more or less inseparable right now as it stands. If you vote to remove the permit, you also vote to fill in the lake and replace it with a stormwater pipe. So in short, I oppose this land use, and the main reason is I have serious doubts that a stormwater pipe would be able to replace a lake, green infrastructure, with no impacts, particularly no serious monetary impacts. I also don't think it's necessarily in line with the flood protection program either. Like I said, I've worked in stormwater. I've done work in partnership with the U.S. Geological Survey, studying regional water quality in Hampton Roads. And from what I understand, data show that gray infrastructure pipes increase runoff responses, pollution, and flooding. And so we know if it's not addressed, flooding will cost $330 million. It impacts annually in Virginia Beach. The comprehensive plan identified $1.3 billion in funding needs over the next 15 years for flood resiliency, and this has been addressed in part by the taxpayer-funded flood protection program. So I voted in favor of this program, which raised our property taxes for flood mitigation, believing that was said that new developments would not be approved if they added demand to our stormwater system, which, you know, that just makes sense. If we're going to increase tax rates to address flood resiliency, I feel like we probably shouldn't let developers profit from coming behind us and undoing that work. We either, you know, believe in flood resiliency, or we don't. So to keep it short, to allow this change in the conditional use permit will be costly, and as far as the benefits of this development, we'll get 12 high-end, single-family homes, from what I understood. Obviously, that might change. And I really liked what you said, Mayor Dyer, in the news about needing to address the housing crisis in this decision. But personally, I'm not really sure 12 single-family homes in an area with limited land will really help too much. So I've heard this term that I really like called socialism for the rich. So we, the taxpayer, are paying for flood mitigation, carrying the burden to restore lakes and wetlands, but we let private companies build and profit off of their destruction. So it kind of seems counterintuitive, shelling out all this money, funding studies for solutions. And we don't always, you know, follow our own solutions. I know your job isn't easy, and I know that you're here to serve the community. So I just hope that you'd represent us, the people. I hope you vote against, you know, socialism for the rich, and I hope that you choose water quality over 12 homes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Martha Thoreau. Then Lucas Gordon.
Welcome back.
So let's talk about deferrals. First, let me say we would not be having this conversation about Y-Cliff selling to a builder who intends to fill the lake. If you hadn't deferred for four times at least, the stormwater resolution of September 2021, you no doubt are aware that council at this time unanimously signed the commitment to the public with promises to rein in developers and prohibit development that would have a negative effect on our area from a stormwater perspective. But on November 10, 2021, your planning commission about had a collective coronary when the resolution was put before them, as promised by City Council, and they refused to enact the stated comp plan amendment. In a word, they mutinied and showed exactly who they worked for, the developers of Virginia Beach. Seems that their phones had been ringing off the hook with, "You can't do this. You've got to stop this," et cetera. Icing on the cake, Mr. Eddie Burdon, for the record, the attorney for Y-Cliff and maybe for the developer, gave an enthralling soliloquy on behalf of the development industry that day, telling even, telling everyone, "There is no need to hurry. No harm would be done by delaying action," is called for in the stormwater resolution of September 2021. You can see that on the tape if you go to November 10, 2021, minute 29. You can see the whole show about how the city planning commission mutinied the city council. So today, we are here once again to tell you that we don't want what you are selling. This is our city, and we are the ones that elect you, pay the staff, and take the hits on our properties and lifestyles by your mistakes. We are watching and know who you are. We know who you support and who you cater to special interest. We see you stack committees with members of the development community and are outraged by the obvious. In fact, there is one business development company that has representatives on practically every committee in this city. Defer again? Why? Because the public refuses to accept what you want to do with this beautiful piece of land in the heart of Great Neck? The church use is the right use.
Thank you very much, Martha.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Lucas Gordon. After Mr. Gordon is Wendy Crutchfield.
Good evening. Once again, my name is Lucas Gordon. Now, originally, I had a bit of a different presentation prepared for you, so sorry you won't get your science lesson tonight. But after hearing some of the more recent developments that have come with this agenda item, I hold two qualms, particularly if the eight acres that have already been designated are split into these two parcels and this 3.88 parcel is developed on with homes, there is still an environmentalism issue at hand, that, of course, being in the form of construction. Construction itself obviously utilizes gasoline. Carbon dioxide enters the atmosphere, but the bigger issue that I hold is that nitrogen and phosphorus will then enter ground, move as well rainwater comes down, will come through and re-enter Lake Conrad, effectively polluting it more. The second issue that I hold is that with the deferral process that's been seen across several months, now I only entered the case item in September, just as a concerned resident, and to see it continue so on and so forward to the point in which that the land is being settled and developed on has become an issue within the case, that it's setting a dangerous precedent for the rest of the city. If we truly want to protect our natural wetlands, as has been stated, this would have already been wrapped up, I'd say, maybe a month, two months ago. So I just strongly urge and echo many of the sentiments that have been said by those who spoke for me, that we continue to preserve our natural wetlands as much as possible, but also prevent these kinds of lengthy issues from occurring again in the future. I thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Wendy Crutchfield. After Ms. Crutchfield is Rhonda Marsh.
Hello.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. My name is Wendy Crutchfield, and I'm a property owner in Great Neck. It's good to see you again, and we appreciate all who have come out for individual tours of the property. Last night, I sent you an email asking to deny the applicant's request to defer this hearing for a third time. We had quite a few children and elderly that wanted to come speak tonight to oppose the destruction of the lake, but we asked them to wait for a certain hearing. However, you have the right to deny the deferral tonight, and I think that you should. We have been hearing about side deals being brokered and understand these are working to the advantage of Bouchard Homes. The development plan for this property was originally provided to the city way back in the spring of 2020. So there has been ample, there have been ample opportunities for the builder to explore a variety of options. Therefore, one more month or four more months shouldn't make any difference. I wonder, though, why these side deals are even being discussed. In 1966, the church asked the community and the city to abandon the right to build homes there, and because it was a benefit to the neighborhood, it was granted. Now, nearly 60 years later, surrounding development has ensured that there is not a benefit to the neighborhood to remove the CUP. We would lose space that we have, that we have been welcomed to use for six decades, to swing our kids, to walk our dogs, to have a moment of peace at the outdoor sanctuary, and to come to church. The standard open space requirement in the zoning is 8%. When Great Neck Estates and Great Neck Manor were developed, there was 0% of open space provided. Great Neck Estates is roughly 68 acres, and if developed today, would require 5.5 acres set aside for the public to enjoy. If you add 23 acres of Great Neck Manor, two of the oldest neighborhoods in Virginia Beach are lacking more than seven acres of open space. For that reason alone, this CUP should be sustained, and the application denied, and this decision made tonight. Thank you again for your time and attention to this community. We hear the win-wins being constructed for the developer, the church, and the city. We want to remind everyone that the community expects a win here, too. We were important enough in 1966 when the CUP was granted. We deserve a place at this table as well as open space. I also wanted to mention, from the previous opening comments, the city has known about this easement this entire, this entire time. It was in the pre-submitting notes from 2020. The city owns the weir also, Ms. Henley. The city owns the weir, the spillway.
Thank you.
Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
The next speaker is Rhonda Marsh. After Ms. Marsh is Christopher Savetes.
What a turn of events, council. Who would have expected that things would be this way? You know, how many months is this application going to drag on? It's been going on and on and on and on and on. And Mr. Burdon even admitted there was confusion at the Planning Commission, and he admitted that there was confusion about the easement. Well, let's talk about something that shouldn't be confusing, which is trees. You talked about it today at the informal. Trees are very, very, very important, and I sent you all an email at 5:45, and it had research on it that was done that showed a typical mature tree can absorb 40,000 gallons of water. It was counted that on the Y-Cliff property, on the 3.88 acres, there are somewhere around 140 trees. We do not need to have trees bulldoze. So I'm asking you to sustain the 140 trees and sustain the conditional use as it was originated back in 1966, not to continue this charade of going on and on and on so the developer can figure out what his next move is. Decide on this. Do not grant the change, and don't approve more impervious surfaces, because that's where this is headed. If you put in an office, or you put in homes, or you put in rooftops, you have more impervious surfaces. And just like the young man who spoke about the environment, what you're doing is you're adding to Lake Conrad II more runoff and more things that make it difficult to be absorbed. And you can't do that and expect not to affect what goes downstream and what ends up in the Chesapeake. So don't approve more flooding. What you really should do is be bold. You were bold with the silos. You broke all the rules, Mayor Dyer. You threw them all out. What about this thing called eminent domain? You all seemed to use that when you wanted the property at Rudy Loop. Give the church some money. Give them a fair price. Get them what they need. That solves that problem. Turn it into open space of 3.88 acres. Go back, Ms. Henley, to the open space committee and have them understand that it's 3.88 acres, and it's not eight acres like the applicant wrote in their application. There's so many errors. This was so fraught with so many problems. You really should just put an end to this and deny the change, and let's start over anew. If they want to reset, have them reset. Have them go back to ground zero. Have them start over again. But we really don't need to be building on that land. We really don't need more impervious surfaces. And the future generations are looking to you because they want to be able to use Great Neck Road.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Christopher Savetes. After Mr. Savetes is Derek Copeland.
Hey, Chris. Nice seeing you again.
Nice to see you as well. Well, good evening, everyone, and all my well-written notes have gone out the window based on the first speaker, so I'm just gonna, you're gonna get a freelance operation here tonight. My name is Chris Savetes. I'm the third-generation owner-operator of the Black Angus Restaurant. We've been serving this area since 1953, Virginia Beach since 1960. I've got two points and maybe one other one, given the information that was provided earlier today. And I'm more or less just, I'm not, I don't have any science lessons or anything like that, just a, one thing I want to point out with the Planning Commission I thought was very interesting and very salient is that while the lake was a big issue about being filled in, they took it upon themselves to look beyond the narrow scope of their vision, the decision that was afforded them, and look to see what the impact was going to be on the neighborhood going down the road. I thought that was a very gutsy decision. I was shocked they did it, frankly, and I was glad they did it. And I think that was something I hope that we can look beyond the decision here that's in front of you of what the impact will be on the neighborhood. Second, I've been living in Great Neck Estates since 1996. I bought my house there. My wife wanted to move somewhere else. She looked in other parts of the city, couldn't find any place any better. We've been there ever since. We actually love the neighborhood and the area that's there, as well as everybody else that lives in that neighborhood. What I hear today, it's one thing to have some extra houses built on this separate lot, but I understand now there's going to be houses along the road and then office space in between, so we're going to have a sandwich of houses, some office space, you know, houses, office space, the neighborhood. Where's the parking? What's the ingress egress? How are we going to ensure the lake is not going to be filled in? And then I'm also wondering, on my third point, is right across the street in Great Neck Manor, the city owns a setback, I believe, right across there. That's about the same amount of land that's going to be dedicated to the houses right here. So why does Great Neck Manor get a setback that protects them? Basically, no construction going on there, and now we're going to build houses right here in front of Great Neck Estates. I find that bothersome. I'm concerned about the plan. I don't think we need to move forward on removing the CUP, and I urge you to not vote, or to vote not to remove the CUP. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Derek Copeland. Mr. Copeland, you're representing Civic League, correct? Mr. Copeland, you're representing the Civic League?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Derek Copeland, and I am the president of the Great Neck Estates Civic League. Today, I am speaking on the opinion, the feelings of the community that I represent, and what's been stated to us. I'm going to keep it brief. There's, you know, all the experts have spoken before me. They've given you the facts. The smarter people that know what's going on here have told you all the information about the damage that could be occurred. You know, other options have been brought up in the last minute when everyone has done their due diligence to say, "This is not right." So I want to keep it simple. You know, this is open space that is available to the communities that live there, and it benefits a large number of people that live in this area and that are impacted by that land and what happens to it versus a single entity of the developer who is going to benefit from any development on it. And if you weigh the single individual business who's going to benefit from using the land for an investment, there are other areas in this city that can be invested in. There are other non-open space areas that can have a business do an investment. There is not a lot of open space left. So to use that as an investment, because it has a higher return on investment for the cost to do the work, is not a reason to lose what little open space we have left. I do want to clarify a couple of things that Eddie Burdon said. It was stated that, you know, this is one little issue here, which is just reclassifying. It was known going into, talking to the Planning Commission. They stated they knew it was one little request to reclassify the land, but they saw the bigger picture. They saw the bigger impact of what that would result in, and we're hoping that that bigger picture is still on everyone's mind and remembers that. There's more going on here. And I do want to also clarify on the churches state that, Eddie Burdon said it, they don't have a choice. They don't have a choice in this matter anymore. They're They're in a legal contract, so they have no option. I don't know if today they were presented by the developer to sell the land, if they would still say yes or no. And we will possibly never know, because they have no longer have any option to make any decision. There's more going on here, and I hope you've listened to everything that everyone's said today and taken all of that, you know, what needs to happen. Thank you.
We have one additional speaker who's Bio-Webex. Becky Valden, you are unmuted and may begin.
This year, I have had three vultures hanging out in my backyard. Now, I know that vultures are not beautiful birds, but they are big and majestic, and they do serve a purpose in our ecosystem. I also have a hawk now hanging out in my backyard, and I have seen hot crays before as well. Where do these birds nest and make homes? They make homes in tall, tall trees. I was four years old when my family moved into the house I'm living in now. That was 1969. And when we moved in 1969, these trees were back there already. So they have to have been there 50, 70, maybe even 80 years. And I do know, as a former landscaper, that when you have standing water and flooding issues, one of the best ways that you can cure it is to plant trees that love water. So this is, as my neighbors have pointed out, this is a very perfect ecosystem back here, that everything works with me.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mayor, and that's all the speakers. Mr. Burdon, you have rebuttal.
I want to thank the folks who came and spoke tonight. I've got a few remarks. First of all, so everyone understands, the church agreed with the request from the council to defer this application previously on both occasions, because the city was exploring what Councilman Taylor, I believe, and possibly Councilwoman Henley were pursuing, seeing if the city would buy the property. The church asked the city, before they ever went down this road, if they were interested in buying the property. So, you know, to suggest that the church has requested a bunch of deferrals to extend this out, et cetera, et cetera, isn't... is not accurate. What is also not accurate is the statement that a conditional use permit, excuse me, a use permit, no conditions, in 1966 is an abandonment of the right to utilize the property as it is zoned. It is not... A use permit is not a zoning district. And frankly, if the church were a builder and was in the building business, based on a number of decisions that have been made here and elsewhere, they could build houses on the property if they wished to do so. The issue is that the... The problem here is the church, as being an excellent, excellent neighbor, has allowed the Boy Scouts to use its excess property. They're the ones who built the area that the last speaker characterized as a sanctuary for their use, the Boy Scouts troop. It's not a sanctuary. And the church has allowed this to be used as a park by the community. It's their property. It's not a park, but they, because they're a good neighbor, have done just that. And with regard to most of what's been said tonight, especially as it pertains to stormwater and trees, the... What we're asking and what the buyer is, you know, now willing to do will serve those purposes greatly. Whereas to approve what the church had originally asked for, it would be straight R10, and you all wouldn't see the stormwater at all. Not at all. With what they are prepared to present in terms of rezoning, which you're not voting on tonight in any way, shape, or form, that will all be there for the public. Everyone will know what the stormwater is. They'll have the modeling and the whole nine yards. Now, that would happen with a by right, but you all... It doesn't come before you. They don't... No one would have a voice at that point in time. So from a standpoint of stormwater, and this is really not a flood-prone area, but that doesn't mean it's not important to make sure that there's not a problem. But we're not proposing to... What the Bishards are now wanting to do, which the church is happy with, you know, would preserve the status quo on the vast majority of the property, especially the part that the last lady spoke.
Okay, thanks, Eddie.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Eddie, Chris?
I don't have any questions, Mayor Dyer. I just have some comments.
Okay, Eddie, I'm gonna have a question for you.
Oh, go ahead. I had comments after your question.
No, please.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Been a long night, long process. I want to thank everyone for coming out. Again, I stated to Mr. Burdon earlier my position, but I think it's important to acknowledge and realize the Planning Commission has spoken on this, and there was a recommendation for denial. I do wanna... I may take some heat from the no-filling-in-the-lake people, but I want to acknowledge that I've had an opportunity to work with Mr. Bishard in communicating in his goal. I don't know what he's done in the past. I don't know other projects, but I can only speak to the character of the individual that I dealt with, and he was professional. We were transparent. We had a goal that the community would win, the church could win, the city would win, and the environment would win. I was transparent with my colleagues. I just recently reviewed all of the emails, everything I sent to the manager, all of the proposals. This wasn't done in the dark. It was done in the light. And there was a goal. And Eddie, you've been professional. I know you take a lot of heat. I even called you back early in the morning. We started this discussion early in September, me and Mr. Bishard, and we realized there were some challenges. And we provided the city council with some options, some consideration. We met. We discussed this. And I was told in October, I believe, or September 29th, I said this publicly, I was told by a consultant that I would need prayer in order to get support from my colleagues for open space to purchase this property. So we've had opportunities to just deal with this. And here we are. I do not support filling in the lake. I do not support five homes on the edge of the road, 2,500, 2,800 square feet. We don't need the additional tax base. We've committed to affordable housing. It is affordable in District 8, but it's not affordable workforce housing. I also support the church's ability to sell their property. As the council member, I don't support the proposal on the table, but I'll tell you what I do support. Mr. Bishard has been fully transparent on who amongst my colleagues he's been dealing with and talking to. Who wants these homes? And I haven't heard from any of those individuals that they're willing to stand up and tell the public that with a Planning Commission denial, with deferrals, that they want to build five homes. So I want to encourage those individuals. We have a process. It only takes six votes. Speak up and let the public know that you want to move forward with building the five homes to increase the tax base, so we can get past this issue. I don't support filling in the lake. I don't support building five homes. But our policy is if there's six, then let's make a move, a motion tonight, make the motion to allow the church to sell their property, and trust that Mr. Bishard will keep his word, will be integral, won't fill in the lake, and will build the five homes that will add to the tax base that we so badly need. So I do not support another deferral tonight, but if there is support for that, I won't get in the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. Could I ask you a couple of questions? And yes, Mr. Taylor, I'm willing to step out and then said, as often, I do speak to people that do have applications here in an attempt to come to a win-win and find a balance, that way that goes on. And Eddie, you know, once again, you know, these type of situations are very emotional. Any previous council, this current council, and future councils are gonna say, when it comes to land use, it really, you know, brings out emotions in people. And, you know, when I was first confronted on this a number of months ago, I said, "Absolutely, I am not filling in wetlands. As a matter of fact, I may, you know, bring forward the possibility of a discussion about us making sure that wetlands are off the table," you know, "in terms of, you know, going forward with this." Because, you know, I, once again, I really think we have... Even though we're running short on land, we have to be sensitive, you know, to the concerns of adjacent areas. You know, we got wetlands boards that say, "You can't build so close far to wetlands," you know, but once again, this is just my personal opinion. But once again, you know, one of the things that I think that, you know, the public, you know, should be aware of is our statutory requirements sometimes when it comes to land use. And Eddie, can you describe what, you know, where Virginia is considered a property rights Commonwealth? Can you give a definition of that for us?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I want to... I would like to take a second to thank Councilman Taylor, because, you know, we dialogue throughout this process, we have the church, and it's been, you know, it's been very upfront, and I don't think anyone... I certainly appreciate what Councilman Taylor said, the church is not trying to fill wetlands. And the city's definition of wetlands would... Is really something that we should never be touching. Sometimes the Corps' definition is a little bit broader, but not... Maybe not so much anymore after Sackett. But Mayor, that Virginia is clearly a property rights state, and, you know, the city... Your home is your castle, and it's yours. And even with property, it's a lot more than a home, you know? And when you have zoning on a piece of property, that gives you rights to develop the property so long as you can meet the stormwater requirements and all the other requirements. But, you know, it... The issue here is not that the church... The church needs to sell this excess property, and that's the bottom line. But Virginia is definitely a pro-property rights state, but frankly, under our United States Constitution, you know, that's pretty much the case. Virginia may be more so than some other states that are a little more... I don't know that some people use the word progressive, but we're... Virginia has become more in tuned with, especially with resilience and stormwater. And so that, again, what we're asking to do will inure to everyone's benefit from that perspective. There's no doubt about that, versus just leaving it to a by-right R10. So I don't know what else I can say.
So basically, you know, I guess the point is, you know, the church is trying to sell property.
Right.
You know, but once again, you know, six months ago or so, when I was confronted with, by, you know, some of the neighbors out there, the ultimate concern was filling in the, you know, the lake, which I was adamantly against. And that is, you know, basically off the... And thankfully, off the table. And I think what we're asking for here, okay, is, you know, that search for balance. The church is right to build, and, you know, we have a builder with integrity, and, you know, we have a need for housing. But once again, I think, you know, finding the balance of it... And now I gotta bring up, you know, a delicate, you know, situation. You know, if we were, in fact, you know, denied the church the right, you know, to sell their property and stuff like that, would there be potential legal ramifications with that, potentially?
There would be, and that's what I was referring to earlier about the contract. And I, you know, I... Again, I understand that it's catching people a little off-guard, because this just came up, and because we don't want it to drag out with no end in sight, or the Bishards don't, neither does the church. That this opportunity is the best opportunity to do the things that most everyone stated, except for the folks who would like to see it all become a park, which that's just not something that the city has the wherewithal to do. But it would... The status quo would stay the same for the vast majority of this property, and the part of the property that the property owners in Great Neck Estates back up to. None of them back up to the property where the houses would be built, but that's not before you all... Not before you all tonight. The church needs to sell its excess property, and the conditional use permit is not a deed restriction. And I want to belabor that point.
So basically, you know, what's being asked for, I think, for the ability, you know, for the Planning Commission, the developer, and, you know, once again, the community engagement to kind of get together, reset, you know, and bring forward a plan, which we have the option to pass or to fail.
Correct. You're not approving anything. We're just... We're gonna bring something forward, or, you know, the church and Mr. Bishard will be bringing something forward that everyone will have a chance to participate in. And when I did public meeting at the church before this went forward, that was a lot of what we heard was, "We don't have the opportunity to see what they're proposing to do. This will be all out front. Everybody will see it." And it's not something that's just... And I'm not saying this critically, but the reality is, if you have zoning, you have the right to build under your zoning, and that doesn't come before the Planning Commission and the city council. And so this will. So it checks all the boxes, whether you vote for it or you vote against it. And contractually, the church has to be in a position, if it's denied, to be able to sell its property. And we couldn't have marketable title to the property, you know, because it says it's religious use, and there's no religious use, and they're not gonna build a church next to a church. So it... That's the reason why, you know, if it... If the zoning part doesn't work, then we're gonna still ask for what's on the agenda tonight, but it's better to deal with the zoning and probably get a much better situation than an uncertain situation as it pertains to what's gonna go on the rest of the property. I would suggest that the lake, with the city having a drainage easement, public drainage easement through it, you know, isn't gonna be filled, but even that process can make the protections of the lake greater than that simple easement.
Okay, thanks, Eddie.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, do I have a motion from anybody?
Yes, I do have something to say. I've been listening carefully to all that's been said, and I like the way Barbara Henley took that time to ask for more clarification. So I would say, instead of deferral, why don't we make a motion? I'll make a motion to refer it back to Planning Commission, and let's see what they come up with.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yes, please.
Yes, Barbara.
Well, just to clarify a couple of points.
Well, just to clarify a couple of points. Certainly, the church has to be able to sell their property. We can't, I mean, that's just not something that we can do, is not allow somebody to utilize their property, and they have the right to sell it, and there's a contract. And I think it was that contract that kind of got in, in the middle of things as far as when the Open Space Committee was looking at it. But the open, none, none of our open space has ever been purchased with eminent domain. It's always been from willing sellers. And that will be the way it is. It will be from willing sellers. And because of all of these things that are affecting this property, that was something that was in the way. You know, there was a contract and so forth. And so I don't know if we, unfortunately, we can't go back to ground zero and start over again because there is a contract on it. So we're at a position of, of trying to figure out how to do something, and I, I think the very fact that, I feel very strongly that we need to respect the church's right to sell their property. But if you're looking at that 3.88 acre parcel, I'm having an awful lot of trouble thinking that some part of it is going to be zoned office, and some part is going to be this drainage easement lake there that's not going to be touched. And then there's going to be five houses? Something's wrong with that, too. So I'm certainly not thinking along the line of what I'm hearing. So I wouldn't want to give anybody the impression that that's something that I think is a good idea. I think something's overdone on that 3.88 acres, but I, I respect the right of the, the church to, to, to keep the portion that they want to keep for their church and sell this excess property. And, and I feel like I'm really in a dilemma because I don't know what the right thing is to do, but I, I just feel like the right thing is not what I've heard here tonight, but something that needs to be worked on some more. So maybe going back to the Planning Commission might be the right thing, but I wouldn't want anybody to think that I think the right proposal is being made on that 3.88 acres either. So just to be plain.
Rose, ma'am.
So this has been one of the most agonizing applications in my tenure that's come before us. And I think Barbara kind of said the same thing, how confusing it's been. And I know it's been agonizing for the community. It's been agonizing for the church, but it's been agonizing for us, too. And I can tell you, there is not a person up here who believed that that lake or pond should be filled in. From the very moment we heard that, we said, you know, we can't do that. I mean, we had that bond referendum passed, and the last thing we're going to do is start filling in a lake or allow it to be filled in. So I do think, because it was, I don't know if it's misinformation or lack of information that I didn't know, and I talked to some of my colleagues, they didn't know either. And when the Planning Commission voted on this, they didn't know. So I think now that through all the agony and all the discussions, and, and there's been a lot amongst all of, all of you and all of us, that the Planning Commission, it needs to go back to them so they can look at it fairly with the, with the complete information that's needed, and then give us a, a recommendation so that we know exactly how they look at it. Because they're, they advise us on, on these issues. So as Barbara says, this is not a fait accompli. This is not meaning that's exactly what we're going to do of what you've been hearing, but let them look at it thoroughly and come back with a recommendation. And I think by referring it to them, it'll be faster than if we withdrew or even we, if we deferred. And like Mr. Burdon said, some of the deferral was to look at if we could buy for open space. So it wasn't just to benefit the developer. So anyway, I just want to say that's where I stand.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, let's open the vote. The vote is to, you know, refer to Planning Commission.
But with no specific direction to them. It's just to send it back. I mean, we're not referring necessarily this particular proposal. We're just saying, send it back to...
No.
By a vote of nine to one, this application has been referred back to Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any appointments?
No.
Just mentioned something. We had a, a couple of speakers on WebEx that were supposed to speak, and they weren't able to come through. The first one, the staff, and I'm not blaming the staff, I'm just saying maybe there's a glitch somewhere, was not able to connect. And then after the vote, she was really upset because she had been on, waiting on, online since 5:45, and so she was not able to speak. And then I know Mr. Dean wasn't able. I was glad to see that the last speaker on WebEx was, was heard, but I think we really got to look at that because if people call in and they're waiting, and so I know Amanda said she would reach out to the lady that contacted me and maybe also Mr. Dean and find out, you know, what happened there.
Vice Mayor, I did speak with them.
But we, we need to figure out and make sure that this WebEx is working correctly.
Vice Mayor, it is working correctly. I spoke to Mr. Fairley regarding the WebEx. The first speaker was not on until after the item was already closed, that you already voted on it, and then Mr. Dean never joined.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll count that as an old, you know, old business. Any other old business? Any other new business? Thank you all. We are adjourned.